All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 5th, 2025 work session of the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors. We're going to start out with a flag salute and a moment of silence.
Are you recording?
Our pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, can I get roll call, please?
Dr. Baldino? Mr. Cannon? Ms. Donahue? Ms. Ewing?
Present.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Knopf? Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Scaff?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Okay, prior to continuing on with the meeting, I'd like to read a statement. Good morning or good evening, everyone. As we begin tonight's meeting, I want to take a moment to remind all in attendance of the expectations we hold ourselves and each other. This board is committed to conducting its work with professionalism, civility, and respect. We ask that everyone present, board members, staff, and members of the public join us in maintaining a respectful and constructive environment. Personal attacks, disruptive behavior, or disrespectful language will not be tolerated. We are here to support the learning and education of every student in Keystone Central School District. Our focus must remain on doing what is best for our students, staff, and schools. Thank you. Next, I'd also like to point out that this evening, from 6:01 to 6:18, we had an executive session that dealt with personnel and legal matters. Okay, so we're going to kind of jumble the agenda a little bit and move into having the hearing of visitors before we have a presentations. Okay, so I'd like to call, let's see, there's Martin Lewis? Are you gonna talk, or do you guys both want to talk together?
I'm separate.
Okay, all right, good deal then. All right, just before you begin, I have to read this. The Keystone Central Board of Directors encourages public comment from its citizens. Each community member may speak for a period of no longer than four minutes per board policy. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board, rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. Our individual email addresses are on the website if you'd like to contact your individual board representative. We ask that you please direct complaints of a personal nature regarding an individual employee directly to the superintendent. With that being said, Martin, floor is yours.
So this might go poorly because I just put bullet points because I want this to kind of come out naturally, but it might go good, who knows? I just wanted to thank all the board members that were able to attend the Bucktail graduation on Tuesday. I really appreciate seeing you guys there. I guess I'll start this off by saying that my time as the student government president has ended as of Tuesday. Our new officer for president, Keta Bisman, is now taking over. So I guess this is kind of a farewell for me to the board. I will be continuing to watch the board from Mansfield, where I will be spending the next four years trying to get a secondary science education degree. I just kind of wanted to come back and reiterate one of the things that I've said prior. This district, I think, is great, and I think there's so much potential in every school in this district. I think this board can also be great like those schools, but I think it needs some work from everyone here. This room, like I've said, needs to be a place of deliberation and civil, respectful, just working together at all times. The comment made by the president just before the meeting started is exactly right. We've included something in our student government constitution now that we would like our members to attend at least two public government meetings by the end of their school year. First one will be by the end of the first semester. And one of the first organizations that we shall recommend that they observe is this board and the district. So there are very young, impressionable minds watching you guys and learning how to govern and how to lead. And I think it is very important that this room demonstrates all of these qualities that we need, like all of the qualities that are in the mission of the school district and the vision of the school district. Some of our newest officers are pretty young. They're sitting right behind us. So they're ninth graders, and they have a long time with this board, and right now, they're very impressionable. So it is, one of the last things that I want to see before I leave is just that the student government is set up pretty strong to start off for next year. So hopefully, they can learn a lot from you guys. I'm hoping I won't have to come back and lecture you again, but Mansfield's only two hours away.
Got Zoom!
But yeah, so thank you guys for the work that you have done. I think, as a now graduate of Bucktail, I think this district has done excellent. Our teachers have done excellent. I think our administrators have done a good job. And thank you guys, and farewell for now.
Thanks, Martin.
Thanks, Martin. Okay, McKenna? Okay, McKenna?
Good evening. I'd like to start off by thanking you guys for squeezing me in to last minute, but I'm going to start off with some concerns brought to us as the year came to a close. I would like to bring to your attention that Bucktail students are dissatisfied with the food quality that we were given. Student Government created a survey to take student concerns into consideration to try and improve our school one step at a time. But the food quality concern is the main problem that students have brought up. Students have seen improvement in the food quality, but there is, but we notice there is still a lot of room for more improvement. We hope to see more school-wide student involvement when gathering student opinions on the meals for the next school year. We have also heard several complaints about the new grading policy. The new policy, based on formative and summative assessments and classwork and homework, devalues the actual work that students put into class on a day-to-day basis. Students would like to see a revision to the grading policy that fairly reflects the hard work of our students. And now I would like to finish up with a rundown of the year. To start the year, we had our yearly back-to-school night in August. The tennis team ended the season with a winning record. The food bank in November was extremely successful. Moving on to December, the Christmas auction was very successful for the yearbook club making over $1,000. The girls' and boys' basketball teams both ended the season with a winning record. The junior high wrestling team that has just started this year has done very well. Before Christmas vacation, the concert band held a holiday concert with a great turnout. In the spring, the softball team made it to the district playoffs and put up a good fight. The Bucktail Concert Band competed at Music in the Parks for the first time in 20 years and earned a fourth place, earned fourth place with an excellent rating. We also were presented the Spirit Decor Award. Not long after the band returned, we held a spring concert to showcase the songs we competed with, along with the elementary concert band, with slow but steady growth, and songs from a few soloists. The senior class went to the Ace Water Park and had a lot of fun. Thankfully, no one drowned while whitewater rafting. They had a great time and are very thankful to have been able to take that trip to conclude their senior year. I would like to congratulate the class of 2025 and wish them luck with all their future endeavors. At the end of May, the student government held a special meeting to elect the officers for the 2025 to 2026 school year. I was elected as president, Lola English as vice president, Carrie Diddy as secretary, Emma Gensel as treasurer, Caitlin Poloski as board representative, and Olivia Henderson as public relations. Mrs. Kim Rixstraw will continue to be our advisor. This year, we have also established the framework, we have also established the framework for all student government members to be elected to grade-level seats next year. Next year, elections in September. On June 24th, the ecology class and members of the student government plan on visiting the U.S. Capitol, museums, and the National Mall. We were given Senate gallery entry passes from Senator Fetterman's office, and the costs are covered by the Clinton County Economic Partnership and a fundraiser held by a community member from Renovo Area Heritage Park. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Arden, I'm expecting big things from you, seriously. Because I can, you got a head on your shoulder, and the things that you're involved in, I actually expect to see you as a leader coming out in the future. I mean, I see the qualities now, and I'm looking forward to just seeing how far you can go. So, thank you. Go ahead.
And also, I can almost guarantee you that you're going to see the board in agreement right now. I agree with you, President Roger. Does anyone disagree with President Roger?
Nope.
Nope, there you have it. Your wish come true.
Okay.
The only thing I can say is, Martin, sorry I missed your graduation, but I was in the dentist's chair late at night, and I didn't want to be there.
It was fun. It was a good graduation. You asked a great job.
All right, now, let's go back to where we should be, and that would be the Liberty Curtain Project update. Martin, I'm surprised you haven't skiddled out of here yet.
Thank you.
They're asking that they would like to leave yet.
Oh, okay. If you want to stay, you're welcome to, but, you know, if you want to leave, you can do that, too.
Better do it before we lock the doors.
See you, guys. Take care. Have a safe trip up the road.
Scaredy cat.
Have a good summer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, hello, everybody. We're going to do a short update for Liberty Curtain, and really just, and then also open it up for any questions that anybody would have. Speaking with the superintendent, we wanted to have a report to all of you before the summer. Well, I guess the summer has started, but really, we're coming into the home stretch with the project, and so we'll do a quick overview of where we're at and what's going to be occurring this summer. Okay, so if we go sort of two pages forward to the summary report on the screen. And I'm trying to look at the screen. Okay, well, everybody's got a handout. Going through some general information, generally, we're about, time-wise, we're at 92%, a little over 92% through the project, and as well as cost, we're 90% complete with the project. We are well on order with the contractors as far as processing invoices, as well as change orders. We're going to actually go through that in a little bit more detail further in the report for each of the contractors. As far as the exterior of the building, we're roughly about 98% complete with the building, and really, all we're down to is miscellaneous electrical equipment, for instance, security cameras, things like that being on the exterior of the building. Punch list, so reviewing the exterior, you know, is anything damaged, needs to be repaired. Our construction administrators with the school district do a survey of everything installed and sign off on that, and if there's any concerns, then the contractors have to repair those. And so we're going through that process right now. There's also some miscellaneous caulking on the exterior of the building. Interior-wise, really, the majority of the building is complete as far as general construction, plumbing, and HVAC. Really, we're just down to the electrical components right now. Electrical always follows everybody as far as wrapping things up, and most notably also then tying in with the district's IT as we prep all the classrooms throughout the building. So there is still some wiring, things of that nature. We also do have some general contractor, pretty much all the classrooms are done, and we're down to doing some miscellaneous woodwork out in the main lobby and down through the corridors of the building. Probably the big thing is just in the last week, all the teachers' supplies from the existing building were palleted and brought over and staged outside of each of the classrooms, so you're going to see that in some of the photos this evening. And today, I actually didn't have a chance to follow up with the contractor, but I think today was supposed to be, was to be a big day. We were bringing on the permanent power to the site, which has been, no. So we're working with the power company, which is always can be challenging with them being a utility, but we're working on that turnover for the building, which is also affecting our ability to start demolishing the building and doing abatement, which is going to occur effectively. The goal was to start tomorrow. We may still start, for instance, prepping things like that at the one end of the building. Okay. And then that's really the large component that's going to occur now is the building, for all intents and purposes, is going through the final checks. In fact, even the classrooms that I mentioned, in order to bring the staff's supplies and for the classrooms over, we validated everything that was in the classrooms, any concerns, damages, and the contractors have been working through that in the past month. So the advantage there is we're not going to be doing that at the very end of the summer. We have the entire summer, really, to bring the building online for the district. And then really, we'll be with the demolition of the building in the coming couple months. Really, the key is bringing the new access drives and parking and bus drop-off and play area for the students online for the site is going to be the majority of the summer. What you see up on the screen now is some of the photos for the building, and some of these are specific areas, for instance, and some are before and afters over the last few months. The main hallway and the media center, we really don't have the four photos because those spaces really were the last to come online, but the main hallway connecting the two classroom wings is complete at this time. All the materials are staged outside of those areas. The media center with both the library component as far as stacks, classroom and breakout maker spaces for the school is ready to go. And then you see some of the before and afters of the classroom wing, both in February versus now June 2nd, with all the materials stacked outside of classrooms. Entrances from the main lobby, student restrooms are complete with the toilets sort of out on the hallway side, so teachers can fully monitor what the kiddos are doing. So that's all ready to go. Some more photos of the other classroom wing. Not a whole lot has really changed in the classrooms in the last few months. Really, the classrooms were pretty far along. It was more of just the ceiling tile hadn't been installed up until now as the electrical and HVAC heating systems were brought online. Main office is now complete with all the cabinetry, desks, reception. So really, we're just into the final cleaning. And I would note, actually, that the district has decided to take on the final cleaning themselves, and we'll talk about that in the change orders a little bit, bringing some savings to the project. On the exterior of the building, new main entrance, a couple months ago, we still had some, the final metal panels needed to be installed. The doors weren't installed simply because of the materials were being brought in and out. We didn't want to damage the building, so that is all now complete. That supplies are, for the most part, done coming in and out of the building. And they're working in the sort of the student main lobby right across from the reception and administration is a sort of a gathering area to have children, whether it's after hours, before school, that they can sort of be monitored in that space by the staff. Okay? Mechanical rooms still have some work going on, but essentially, all the systems are up and running. Probably the largest component is the electrical that I mentioned earlier. Kitchen equipment is installed. That's one of the last items is there's a good amount of cleaning and setup for the kitchen this summer, and ultimately, that will also go through a series of health clearances before the kitchen's fully brought online. And happy to say that the new gym multipurpose room is complete. They were doing the final line work on the wood floor last week that you can see in the one photo on the left, sort of the last two versus where it was a couple months ago. So HVAC lighting, gymnasium equipment, wall graphics, wood floor, everything's been finalized for the gymnasium. Next slide, we're going to talk about just a breakdown of the pay applications for the contractors. And probably the takeaway here is that the plumber and mechanical are essentially, each of them are 99.8, 99.5, they're done for the plumbing and the HVAC systems. The electrical is still dragging behind everybody else, but again, they follow everybody, so that's why. That's typically anticipated. The electrician also has some site work with lighting. And then the general contractor is at 90% complete right now, and that's really because he still has the large component, which is all the site work and the building demolition. Where the plumber and the mechanical at five feet outside of the building, the new building, they have no work. So really, it's coming down to the general contractor and the electrician for the remainder of the project. We have processed $50,000 of change orders, so we're really, knock on wood, we're wrapping up the project at a quarter percent change order, so very low. We've used one-tenth of the overall contingency fund. And actually, while the contractors have processed $50,000 worth of change orders, in the following log, there is going to be a change order coming for a 27, I think it's a $27,000 credit for final cleaning. The district decided today we're going to do the cleaning themselves. It not only brings up cost savings to the project, but frankly, it's a lot of times, it's almost better for the staff to get into the building and start understanding how they're going to be maintaining the building on a regular basis. That's going to bring the overall contingency down, or change orders down to roughly hovering right around $30,000 when we're all done with the project. So it will be less than a quarter percent for change orders on the project. So that's sort of overall invoicing of where we are. We are still holding a retainage on the contractors of, all four added up about $1 million, and we will not be, we will be slowly reducing and releasing those dollars to the contractors, but only after verification of the quality is the HVAC system fully working, is all electrical work done, is quality of work, so that when all of you take over the building this coming summer, you have assurances that you're in a strong position and you don't have a situation where contractors have walked away from a project and don't come back for repairs. When you're holding, for instance, $600,000 on the general contractor, that's a large sum of money that they can't just walk away. So, and we have a pretty strong set of contractors. We had a few bumps and bruises along the way, which is very typical, but generally, we didn't have anybody that was really difficult to work with on this project. I think everything's closing up pretty well. Okay. And then if there would be any change orders you want to talk about, two pages, just sort of an itemized list of the change orders, but again, really not a long list on the overall project where we're at. So really, we're, probably the big thing is what happens as we start tearing down the building. Are there any unforeseen conditions, some site work, maybe some unsuitable soils? If we get a lot of rain, we might have to fill out some of the soils, but at this point, that's really, there's not a whole lot that we should be running into. So with that, opening up to any questions that anybody has.
So basically, we're looking at a very good timeline, and financially, we're looking at actually coming in under what we've budgeted, is that correct?
Substantially under. I think we budgeted $540,000, $42,000. So we're going to be, we're hovering right around $30,000, so we're going to be a half a million dollars to the good at the end of this project.
All right.
We have been periodically, your business manager has been requesting where we are with payments and everything, and we're up to speed right now. So yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Yes, Elizabeth?
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, Elizabeth.
How are you?
Good.
Oh, okay. So sorry, let me get some notes here. All right, thank you. Please don't worry. Okay, I wish I would have emailed you ahead of time. I'm not putting you on the spot.
Okay.
Okay, just email, you know, Chair Roger or Superintendent Redmond, or however you want to do it, but two quick questions. I might have missed it. What's the total capacity of students for this school?
I'd have to follow up on that.
Yeah, that's what, again, total capacity for the school. And then on page, oh, shucks, no page number, no problem. I'm assuming it's the last page on the board docs?
Okay.
I might be misunderstanding this. Under plumbing contractor, please.
Okay.
The first item. Extend the foreign sanitary piping to the trash compactor location. Is, now, again, I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I believe it was almost a year ago, Rob Pacello, the former facilities supervisor, came to us and requested an add-on where we could have some sort of sewer line attached to the discharge outside, and the board did not approve that, so I don't know where this one is located.
Elizabeth, if you look over to the right of that line, first of all, you'll see that it's not highlighted in green.
Okay.
And then over to the right, it says not accepted.
Okay, that was my question. I just wanted to make sure.
Which is pretty common. You know, you're always having change orders come in and out, in and out for a project. I mean, frankly, sometimes I'll have logs that I'm turning into owners that are, instead of two pages of change orders, it's 10 or 20, especially for large projects. And there's very often a lot of, sometimes things will come up, they're vetted out. They're either not accepted because we discovered they were the contractor's responsibility. The owner may not want to do that, so that's, in this case, that item was not accepted.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you for helping me to understand, and I'm not going to push this. I'm not pushing it, because I was, it may come up next year, maybe not come up, but when the original contract was written, they decided to take the landscaping out, and it was, quote, "left up to administration and the board to decide what the future landscaping would be," design. So no landscaping design was ever incorporated into this. So I'm not sure what your plan is or future plan is for the area, but if you could just let them know, and then they can tell us, or...
Yeah, I can answer that, actually, I'm on the spot here a little bit. There is actually some landscaping in the project as far as trees and buffers. Those are code required, so they have to be in the base project. I do, you know, I'd have to go back and look through the files. I think we did early on have a discussion about some additional landscaping beyond the code requirements, and I think the district decided not to go that direction because we were looking for cost savings. There was also, we looked at sort of a landscaped outdoor classroom area between the two classroom wings or off of the media center.
Right.
That wasn't, that was an alternate that wasn't accepted.
And that's fine. We can maybe get a sponsor someday.
Yeah, and the nice thing is the drawings are in the documents. That would be something the district, and that's not uncommon for districts to add, you know, say, increase the number of trees or landscaping in the coming years. Probably the big thing is getting through the project, which has been a long road over the last few years.
Right, and also, I mean, I'm just saying this from the outside. It's like when you do a house, you live in the house for a while, and then you decide, okay, we're going to also add this because this is a good place for this. So I'm actually glad that that wasn't included in that at that time, so that way, in the future, they can decide later.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
And I think, for the most part, this may be probably more than likely my final report. We might do some summary of something like that at the end of the project, but for all intents and purposes, we're really just down to the final pieces.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Chris?
I'm looking at all these change orders, a lot of them very recent. I'm just curious, why were we never, ever told about them?
Recent change orders?
So when, at the beginning of the project, we agreed on a set of levels about the things that the property services manager could approve in a dollar figure the things that the property services manager could approve and a dollar figure for that, and all of these are within his his authority to approve for the change.
Okay, I'm just curious why we were never just emailed about it or advised about it, that's all.
They all seem.
It'd be nice to be kept in the loop.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
Jeff?
I I want to just take a minute to thank you, Jeff, and for all of the the work you've done for us and I'm I'm totally amazed at how smooth this project has gone, honestly.
Me too.
And I, and I know you are, especially with the this small number of change orders. I mean, typically, as you've said in the past, you have a lot more than this in in most of your projects. I think you if I'm miss miss speaking, please let me know. I, and looking at these pictures, it's just, it's going to be a beautiful building. And it's going to be a great addition to our our district and I'm I'm very, very pleased with it. So thank you for all your efforts and it's has always been great to work with you. So thank you.
Be fun to see the kiddos coming to the building this this fall.
Definitely, definitely. Okay, all right. Thanks, sir.
Everybody. Have a great night.
Yep, you too. Okay, moving along. Next up is superintendent's report.
Right, I just have.
Visitor.
We already did that.
That's right, you screwed up.
No, I said we were going to do it for the kids.
Oh, so that was hearing of the visitors?
Yes.
Oh, okay, misunderstood again.
Okay.
Okay, I just have a couple of things here. First of all, PSBA Leadership Conference is coming October nineteenth through twenty first. And as it has been for the last few years, it's at the Kalahari Resorts and Conventions. Please let Christina and me know as soon as possible if you would like to attend. The rooms fill up fast and all that sort of thing. So again, October nineteen twenty first, let us know if you want to attend that. We are just finished off the year. Fourth grade promotions and graduate have happened, graduations have happened. And we're we're just kind of closing out the school year. Now, it may seem like that's a time when things slow down, but here in the central office is typically when things really kind of ramp up. We're starting work on Monday with the professional work, professional development work with our leadership team and our administrators. And that will continue throughout the summer as as we all, as our our kind of central office and administrative team get ready to start for the school year coming up. At the same time, there's lots of facilities work. You'll see a bunch of bits later on in the agenda for a lot of the work that Sam's wants to accomplish this summer. We're setting up our fresh professional learning plan for all through the next year. It's just, it's just a crazy busy time, so at the same time, we're going to do our best to try to get away every now and again because we like to, you know, this is also sort of the best vacation time for us. So we'll be around and things will be busy. But we're excited to close off this school year and get started for the next. As Jeff Staub mentioned, Liberty Curtain Demolition is starting. I think it's going to be an interesting show, and if you want to go see a building get knocked down, I think they're supposed to start on Monday. Please don't go on site. So they've essentially closed off the road to get onto the Liberty Curtain building site for anyone except for the demolition contractor and the general contractor. There's the road along where Blanchard Church is, you can go and there's parking spots where you can go and kind of see everything get knocked down. Which again, might be kind of interesting, but please don't go on site, and that's both for the board and as well as everybody here who's listening. Please stay off site during the demolition.
I thought you said they were going to start tomorrow.
Little pieces of it.
Okay.
The demolition, so their asbestos abatement, all that sort of thing that starts to happening, but I mean, the big, big machines knocking stuff down, all that starts, supposed to start on Monday. And I want to say a huge thank you to our staff, L T, for another successful school year and for everything that all of our staff does contribute in their time and their effort and their personal resources for the sake of our students and our community. So thank you, everyone, who does everything that they do for our kids. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, reports. Treasures report. Anybody have any questions on that? Financial reports, questions? Enrollment reports, questions? Committee reports. Well, let's start out with curricular, co-curricular. All right.
Bill ran that meeting.
Was that April?
You're right, I did. And I forgot. Honestly, I do.
I don't have my notes here and I don't remember exactly what we talked about. We
We discussed competitive cheerleading.
Oh, yeah, it was the the cheerleading and the was it the majorettes? Was it the baton?
Not, we already did.
There were two things, it was.
I want to say baseball.
So there are, there are three things on the agenda. There was the clay target.
Clay target.
Right, and then the competitive cheer and middle school baseball were the three things that were on the agenda.
We thought that the the cheerleading and the clay clay targets were were good ideas and that they're they're progressing along there. From what was presented, they're not going to impose any significant, well, pretty much not any economic impact. At least for the first year or two, so we can go along with that. We're investigating what the feasibility is of the the baseball. We're checking out availability of fields and estimates of what what kind of economic impact that's going to have, but there's been significant interest in that, that we feel that would be a a good thing to do if we can pull it off. There's both parent and student interest in playing baseball at that level.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sometime in the future, because we have little league and then we have to have middle school baseball, how, what the relationship would that be or would it be a conflict? I mean, not right now, but maybe as they progress. The parents. It'd be interesting to see how that would all work out. I mean, I want it to work out, to be honest with you. I'm very happy about the clay.
I think that should be something to brought up to the committee.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so let's see. Next up is the, oh geez, I lost my place here. Finance committee, Jeff?
No.
No.
Bill, my bad.
Yeah. We discussed the budget and planning to go ahead with the budget that's been presented several times. The, there's the contract for Baker Tilly is coming up. Johnny's recommendation is with changes within their system, soft involving software, major software changes, it would be wise to stick with the same auditors. So going ahead with that, but it, although they've given us quotes for three years, we're really only committing for a year at a time. Which is good.
Okay.
We went over the, you know, the interest earnings and probably the the one thing that came up, the last thing that came up that's might this involve some discussion here is Dr. Redman requested hiring a consultant to to make recommendations as to where we might improve efficiency in the staffing. So I think that's something, we were kind of divided on that and that's something we might want to discuss here at another time.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, Facilities Committee.
Okay, thank you. We had a rather lengthy agenda discussion. We met on May twenty seventh. And there were some informational items at the beginning of the meeting. We had two representatives from Mill Hall Borough to discuss the ongoing topic of the sewer problem. And they brought to our attention that the I guess the the they inspected the grease traps and so on, and I guess that they aren't functioning properly and that is something that is according to Mr. Hoy, that they do that, they clean those out as a routine every summer. And they were just concerned, they brought some pictures again of the items that were in the that get logged up in the into the sewer and they are again, again, bringing to our attention that the fact that it has they, you know, they it's cost them money to to clean that out. So what we decided to do is we're going to have, of course, the grease traps completely cleaned out, which they would probably be done anyway. And then we're going to totally flush out the sewer line and then see how things go in the fall. And if there's additional need to address this further, we will do that after the school year starts and see how if things are continuing to be a problem. I think Mr. Hoy has gotten some some quotes that we may want to look at here later on in the, at a future meeting as far as the cost of the hand dryer, the hand dryers. He has a total cost for the cost of the wiring and the cost of the dryer. So if we need to revisit that, we will have a dollar figure for them for you at that point. Couple other informational items. There's been a student and her father at Bucktail has have come to us with a proposal to build a pavilion near the tennis court. They are, the the father is a contractor. He is willing to provide the labor materials and the design. And so what we decided to do was wait and see exactly what is involved with this, if, you know, as far as the liability and so on. And as soon as they have those designs and that they were for us to look at, they will we will make a decision whether we want to move forward with that or not. The high school family consumer science classroom design, if you recall, I think we've mentioned this, if not, the junior and senior classes in Mr. Fred Hoy's class had a little competition going between the two of them as far as coming up with the design. And for this room, you can see them on the tonight's agenda. Excuse me. And they decided to go ahead and get combine these designs and it's it's been a good project for the kids. And they're going to turn these over to the contractor for a project not to exceed two hundred thousand. Next item is the Rob Elementary Flooring. Excuse me. We have a a bid for that for more, not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we, excuse me, I can't lose my voice. Mr. Barth, I was going to talk to you about which design that you preferred, the the epoxy that's being recommended or the polished concrete. So if you have any comments on that at all, whichever you would, what your preference is.
So my preference from a, from a standpoint of aesthetics and how it looks, I do like the way the epoxy looks better with the flaked epoxy. From a standpoint of long-term maintenance, I'm not sure which one would require less maintenance long-term. I do know that it's my understanding that they would require less maintenance than stripping waxing of tiles. So the tile situation in our building is they're they're starting to really deteriorate. So at the end of the day, either one would look better than the deteriorating tiles that are currently there. But if it was solely up to me, I would say I like the epoxy look better than the polished concrete.
Okay, and that was what I think Mr. Hoy was recommending. It's it's the same type of a floor that we're putting in over at Woodward Elementary in the gym multipurpose area. So that's on tonight's agenda. Next item was replacement of furniture at the middle school science. There is a recommendation there for the board to approve that project. It's for three classrooms, I believe, the furniture in there is, it's really beat and it really needs to be replaced. Concrete repairs. This is a, the bid for that was from R C Bowman, that's over at also at the middle school around the area around the auditorium entrance and parking lot. There is a an area, pretty good size area there that's going to, it's deteriorated, needs to be replaced, so that will be, that's also on the agenda for approval for next week. The, you remember the middle school, we we talked about possibly taking the some excess space in the middle school library and creating two classrooms. However, in in the meantime, when looking at that, there's, we thought there'd be enough space for that purpose, but there's only room for one classroom. So we're still going to move ahead with that and recommend that to go ahead with that project and we really need, all of these things need to be approved so we can move ahead with it this summer. The other things on there are just routine approval for service agreements from Keystone Security Technologies. And for Fry's Fire Protection Service. And that's pretty much it was from what was on the agenda, so.
All right, thank you. Next up, yeah, Chris?
I watched the facilities meeting on YouTube.
Okay.
And last month's meeting, I had said, made the comment about let's get to the root of the problem before we just put a Band-Aid on it, and I'm glad that you guys did that. Because now we know what the problem is, but I was amazed that they said it wasn't paper towels clogging the system, it's toilet paper.
And grease.
It was white paper and grease and that just shows a lack of maintenance on our part. So I'm hoping that we can bring that up to speed. I'm sure Sam will be all over it.
I don't know that it's a lack of maintenance. This is something that accumulates every year.
Right.
As far as the grease and so on, it it comes from the cafeteria and so on, and it's you know, I I don't think it's accurate. The paper towels are still a major problem. It's not just toilet paper and so on.
Well, that's that's not what I heard from those guys, but it it's none other. I'm glad we looked into it. One question I do have is apparently we've been paying bill to the borough that I've never heard of before because we weren't doing anything about this problem? Do we know anything about that? Because they, I was handed a a copy of a letter that says clear back from in March where we're being billed for cleaning out the lines and stuff, and we've never heard anything about that.
The district has not paid any such bill. We had, we did receive that, but we did not come to an agreement that we were responsible for cleaning out their lines.
Okay, because this this letter and the bill attached was for sixteen hundred and thirty-nine seventeen, we're just not paying it.
Their claim was that we had a responsibility to clean out their lines and we have not come to an agreement on that.
Okay, because we don't know about it, so.
May I add something?
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're done?
Yeah, I'm I'm done.
Okay. I, maybe next meeting you can give us an update, because when I go to the Borough Council meetings, I'm getting told a different story. So I'm sure between the two of you, you you'll find the the right answer and then we can decide once and for all whether or not we're paying this bill because I do know it's causing probably some undue stress right now. So the sooner it's taking care of one way or the other, it'd be deeply appreciated. And I do want, he's not out there tonight, but Tom Cannon with his, thank you. He was very helpful to help me. with his thank you, he was very helpful to help me understand about the difference between the different products and sewer lines, especially the grease. Like he calls it grease is glue. Thank you, Tom, wherever you are. And also the Borough Council and the Borough employees. They've really explained a lot of things to me and helped me learn this process. And I'm glad we're finally going to get our end of the sewer line, the grease traps on a maintenance schedule. And it wasn't on a maintenance schedule. No one remembered the last time it was cleaned out. So this is all uncovered. It's all going to be taken care of and we'll move forward.
I don't know that that's true. I don't know that's that's accurate because that's not what Ms. Mr. Hoy said that this is done on an annual basis. That it was the grease traps are addressed. So that is, I don't think that's an accurate statement.
Okay. All right, so Policy Committee.
Uh, we had quite a good mood and quite a good meeting. We have a lot of things. We moved on the first read. And we're looking at a couple of different things. We decided pretty much to we're going to move two meetings around. One of this next one is coming up Monday. We decided not to take off the two months of meetings that we did like last year. Because then all of a sudden, a whole bunch of stuff legislature wise got changed. And then we started out with 30, 40 items to deal with in a meeting. So we're just going to go ahead and do the meetings if needed.
Okay.
If we don't have anything to update or go over, then we may pass on on a meeting here through the summer. But for right now, we're going to kind of stay in line so that we can keep up to date and not get bogged down.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, next up. Is authorization for the superintendent to bill vacancy or bake vacancies? This is what we've done last year. This is a continuing, just renewing that authorization. Any questions on that? Elizabeth?
Thank you. Again, I'm just going to voice my opinion, one of nine. I believe that if there was something pending that was exceedingly urgent, I think our board has the capability to get together to have a quick meeting just to approve something. I have no problem as a school board member, the superintendent, whether it's housekeeping or facilities or 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 the kitchen, food services. But if there's any supervisors or directors, I truly believe the board should once again be involved with that on a periphery level and be informed so we can look at the qualifications, et cetera. And hopefully, board and the superintendent will be in line. So no, I don't, I don't approve of this. Sorry.
Okay. Next is contract for David Lindsay to renew the renew him as the district solicitor. Questions?
Yeah, there's nothing there for us to look at.
There's no contract.
There's no contract. There's nothing there.
It's a continuation of the agreement that we have currently. And I can, I can provide, I can send that out as an email.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next, school improvement plans. Anybody have any questions on that? Elizabeth?
Yes, the school improvement plan. Was this presented at any committee or is this just?
It normally comes straight to the board like this.
Okay, okay, all right. And then is this a state or a federal mandate?
Yes, this is every school that receives Title I Fund Test to complete a school improvement plan.
Okay, all right. And then this helps as a guideline for what you need to do and your staff. Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is the Clinton County Head Store Head Start M O U.
To hurt the store.
All right, questions on that? Okay, next is the out, the out of state field trip. I think this is like really great. I think it's like super terrific that we got this going on. This just shows that the ecology and student government classes from Bucktail are going to be going down to Washington DC, so. And it's at the behest of Senator Fetterman, so. All right, questions? Elizabeth?
It's great. No, this is wonderful, wonderful, 100% support field trips. It says in there that someone wrote the grant for the Clinton County Tourism, I believe. Whoever that is, thank them. And hopefully, this is something that they can keep doing. And the Tourism Committee can keep supporting this because that whoever initiated that, thank you. Great.
Okay, next up, transportation contract. This is just renewing what we've already had going on before. Any questions?
Yeah, there's nothing there on that one either. If you could put something in there because.
The one that we talked about earlier tonight.
Uh, yeah, never mind. It's not a renewal. That's that.
Okay, this is the one we talked about.
Yes. That was my mistake.
Sorry about that.
Okay, uh, school calendar? Good.
Sorry.
Okay, school calendar, questions? Okay, Elizabeth?
Sorry, but I say this every year and I'm going to say it again.
Election Day.
Thank you, everyone who puts so much time and effort into the school calendar. But I believe that hopefully someday our committee group board can discuss how our school's mission statement may align with this. That on the general election day that we give the staff and students half day or a full day off. And the next one is November 3rd, 2026. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is minutes. Does anybody have any questions with any of the minutes that are being presented? Okay, next up is bills for payment. Any questions?
I sent a couple of questions to Joni today because I was late getting to it.
Right.
But she's going to answer some questions for me later on.
Okay.
That's all.
We'll have them then for the voting session?
Probably. I did told her it wasn't a big rush. I just needed a few things explained.
Just clarifications.
So it works.
Okay, cool. All right, next up is depositories. Questions? Okay, next up is the final general fund budget. Any questions? Okay, Resolution 157, Home State and Farm State Act. Questions? Resolution 158, Budget Transfers. Questions? Resolution 159, Committed Funds. Questions? Okay. Seven through 16 are the bids that have been put out for the different services. Does anybody have any questions on those? Elizabeth?
Yes, I just wanted to let Dr. Redman, your team, however you would like to communicate this. But I've mentioned this during the Facilities Committee meetings multiple times over the last year and a half. That and I'm using our restroom here as an example. When I go into the bathroom, the paper towels, even though the perforated self-serve paper towels don't rip at the perforation. Now, the ones at a different school, you pull it down and you get a piece of paper towel that this big, it cleanly pulls up. So I just wanted to let you know that. For this restroom here, when you pull out the paper towel, the perforation doesn't automatically rip. It just keeps coming.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, Infant Development Transportation Agreement. Questions? Okay, Mosul Management, one K through 12 licenses agreement. Questions? CIU 10 for access. Any questions?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I
You missed one.
I didn't realize you put all of those together.
Number 20.
I'm on number nine.
We haven't gotten to 20 yet.
Oh, I'm on number nine.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw CIU 10 twice there.
Okay. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Number nine, it's just an observation, okay? And this isn't a yes or no answer. I'm not asking a question. I'm just bringing it to our our attention. If staff believes that the majority of our art supplies are in this bid, then why do we almost every month see art supplies ordered and granted? There are times when we run low and you have to make a purchase. But it just seems there are so many purchases for art supplies, art supplies, art supplies that I just wanted to say and share my observation. Thank you. And I did have something on 18.
Okay, go ahead with 18.
Okay. Uh, is this a new contract?
No, we started this one last year.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. And you're happy with it? Everything's the same? Yeah?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sure I just wanted to make, yeah, okay, great. That's what I want to hear. Thank you very much.
Need to speak.
Great, good pick. Thank you.
All right, Chris, you had something on CIU 10 for access?
No, I didn't. I was just saying that.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Keep Safe Transportation Contract. Questions? CIU 10 Online Learning Contract. Questions? Baker Tilly Auditing Contract. Questions?
Why are we talking about three years versus one year?
They put the, put it together as a three year thing, but as was mentioned in the Finance Committee, it's their like three one-year agreements, so it can be broken.
Basically guaranteed is a price for three years.
Right, okay. Okay.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I appreciate Joni's rationale for why this didn't go out to bid with everything going on this year. Okay, I understand why we didn't seek other options for an auditor. But I am concerned because number one, the contract isn't on board docs. So again, we, let's put the contract on board docs so we can look at it. And then I am concerned about this. In January, Baker Tilly came to the board and gave a presentation before the audit was completed. And then during that same presentation, I mentioned to them, well, thank you, but I look forward to when you return to give of your final presentation after the audit is complete. They never came back to public school board meeting and gave their final audit. So I never could get my answer, my questions answered. So be that as it may. Please put the contract on board docs in plenty of time so we can review because I may have some comments regarding the contract. Thank you.
Okay, next up, River Rock Academy Services Contract. Questions?
Yeah, I have the same question for River Rock and Nittany Learning.
Yes.
Last year, when we agreed to do those contracts, it was also agreed that we would get a report on how many kids they've done and how the outcome did and how it came.
Yep.
And here we are, the contract's back up. We've not heard a report yet.
Uh, well, we just finished out the year yesterday, so we don't have time to give you a full report yet.
Well, we have one before voting, so.
But they said they would come. Didn't they? They said they would.
I think so.
Yeah, they would come with their own report.
They would come give us a report. So and we just need to see that completed before we vote on another contract. We need to see how the program's working.
From our perspective, we're seeing that the the students who are assigned to these two AEDY programs generally are doing much better because of their their time away. We see these both as effective placements for the students who need that kind of intervention. Of course, it's not perfect for every student in every case, but they have been doing good work for us throughout Nittany Learning Services for a long time. But River Rock more recently, we see them as a valued resource. So from the administration's perspective, we're recommending these because of the results that we're seeing.
I'm curious because we we paid for X amount of slots.
Yep.
So I'd like to see, did we use all those slots? Did we not? Did we have to add more? And that was part of what they were supposed to come bring to us.
Christina has those numbers.
Okay, would like to know them.
Well, yes.
Elizabeth, wait.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, we for our most recent, I think we purchased two slots for River Rock for the remainder of the school year, starting in January. And we started in January and there were only two months where we had one student there instead of two at River Rock. I'm in the first one being in January. And then we had one month where we had three students there. And then in NLS, we've had no less than five students there, starting from the beginning of September all the way through May. And we've ranged anywhere from five students to 13 students in AEDY during a month's time.
Didn't we, I don't remember. Didn't we bid for like 15 seats we paid for or something like that?
Ten.
NLS was 10 last year.
10, okay.
And then we had two for River Rock. And then any seat that you go over, which I believe we essentially had 11 through NLS because it was if you bought 10, they gave you that extra one last year. So we we've not exceeded any of our seats. But if you do exceed your seat, then you pay the per diem rate.
Okay, I just wanted to know if we used what we were contracting.
Yes.
Yeah, we absolutely have used.
Yes.
Okay, and then what the outcome was, like I said, you know, did it do students any good or did they improve or?
Again, not universally, right? Because every student is an individual case, but the majority of the students who go there come back and are able to reintegrate into the school.
Well, I'd like, I'd just like to once again, next year, get another report from both of them so we know.
Do you want a report or do you want a presentation from the providers? Because that is, that's a separate request that I just want to make sure that you're getting what you're asking for.
It could be a presentation so we know what they're offering, what they're doing. That would be nice.
Okay.
We won't be able to arrange that by next week, but.
Right.
July, maybe. And then your outcome and assessment.
Yeah, the the outcomes, again, since we just finished the year, it's going to take a little while to gather that data. And that's some of the work that the principals are going to be doing over the coming weeks is looking at all of that, the data about the about students.
Yeah, no, that's reasonable.
I'm just curious, we're getting a best bang for the buck, that's all.
I I'm, I feel pretty confident that we are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mariki Behavioral Health Agreement. Any questions on that? Okay, Robb Elementary Hallway Flooring Replacement. We just discussed this. Any questions on that? Elizabeth?
Yes. We, during the Facilities Committee meeting, he was, Mr. Hoy, Sam Hoy, was going to, I know there's time crunch, okay? Isn't finger pointing, but this is just a sharing of information. He was going to come back to us with a price comparison on our staff or someone polishing the concrete and staining and sealing it. So until we see that comparison right now, I I can't support this simply because we have the equipment and we have the staff. And what when, and although I appreciate, and I always want to hear employee opinions, I always do. But we aren't a school district that can pick pretty before price and that's how I feel.
Well, Elizabeth, this has already been discussed, correct?
No, it hasn't been finalized.
So on on that, I know, I don't know what the the price comparison is. Of course, we have our own equipment, all that sort of thing, so it would be much much less expensive. One of the issues is just having enough time. So we have the equipment to get a certain volume of work done. And that's already been established. There's work that's happening in the high school that will take all summer long. So if we don't go with the the epoxy flooring, then we'd be putting off the the Robb Elementary Project until next summer.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but again, during the Facilities Committee, I just said to Sam, I said, please, Sam, stop with the 11th hour. If we would have talked about this four months ago or three months ago, it wouldn't place us in these awkward positions.
Okay.
So right now I'm voting no because
Okay, well, we're not voting today, so.
No, I know, I realize that, but we're still waiting for that comparison.
All right, that is a good point. A lot of things come up here where, well, we got to do them now so we can stay on this schedule or we can get out of the class, you know, not interfere with it. All that's, they're reasonable points, but most of the stuff that's coming up seems to me to be things that you can anticipate and should come up earlier so that we can discuss them and if there's any problems.
Okay, don't we have a uh? Yeah, we have the tenure plan, correct?
Go ahead. Your facilities, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, i- if you look at each of these items that are being recommended for, to be done. They are on and have been on the ten-year plan that we, we came up with here a few years ago. It's not like these are things that just happen to be, somebody said, let's do that now. It's, they've been on the queue for quite a while, so um. We're trying, we're trying to use the money that we have in an efficient way and. If we, if we're gonna use the people from the district to go in and do these floors and polish them. Then something else isn't gonna get done. We're gonna have other projects that are gonna be put on hell, on, on hold and have to be held, so um. I, I just, I just don't think. This is, this, this has been in there. It's, it's been listed as a thing to be done for this particular school year. So it's not like it's, it's something that we just thought of all of a sudden came up with, hey, let's do this.
And if I may, it's um, the, in the tenure plan, there's a rough estimate. For how much we think it's gonna cost, and this quote comes in underneath that estimate. So it's budgeted. We have the money set aside to do this work and the cost of doing. The uh, bottom floor fits within that budgeted amount.
That was gonna be one of my. Questions was, is this money already put back for these projects? Because even though stuff is in the ten-year plan. We can't really, we don't know where we're gonna be at financially.
Yep, it's all.
And if there is something that comes up and we say, hey, it's. Time for the ten-year thing, are there things that we can say, hey, we need to hold off on that? So that we're not having to increase taxes and maybe we can look at it at a different time. So it's not so much of an eleventh hour ordeal, like Bill said. Even though it's on the plan, is, is anybody looking at? Hey, can we hold this off a little longer till we get finances in line?
Uh, so these, many of the projects that are on the ten-year plan, I can't speak to everyone individually.
Right.
Have been put off for years and years and years. If you, you've been to Rob Elementary, you know what the, what the title looks like. This is a project that's been put off for years.
Oh, I agree that that floor needs done. I'll, I'll agree with that. And I think. Along with what Tyler said, I like the epoxy because. I did it on my business floors. I've done it on multiple floors and it's held up very well. But I was just curious on some of them, because we have some other ones that are coming up I gotta ask about.
Okay, just keep in mind that we already have them budgeted.
Right.
And the money's already there for them.
Right, but if we, if we held it off, maybe we wouldn't have to spend money somewhere else as well.
Well, so the problem with that, so I appreciate that, that line of thinking. If there's ways that we can uh, reduce costs, that's good. The, the issue is, if, the more that we push these uh, repair and maintenance costs down, the more expensive they get down the line. Both because the work costs more because of typical price escalations, but also the thing that we're trying to address gets worse.
When, when that ten-year facilities plan was done, the projects were ranked in order of priority. So we, and that, so they've been trying to do that for ten years. So the ones that can be held off have been. Are at the lower, you know, the longer end of that. It's, they're not. Yeah, so they've been done by priority. They're on there because they're a priority and they need done, and that's when they're coming up.
And also this, that, the funds for that, if you recall, we committed those funds, Joni, if. If I'm wrong, tell me, but I think we committed those funds for facilit, for capital improvements, correct? And so that money has been earmarked for these types of things. So. Um, I think that. You know, that's one of the problems that the district had for years. That we kept kicking the can down the road with facilities. And things deteriorated, and then it gets to the point where. Then you got some real major problems. It's like not doing work on your house.
I understand preventative maintenance wholeheartedly. And I believe in it, but then I see where we spend money on stuff that's not in a ten-year plan. And we don't really need, and we could hold off, but we don't.
Such as?
Like what?
Uh, well. It's like we bought an LED sign. Uh, we didn't really need it. I looked, there's a custom rug out here in the hallway. Do we need to spend the money for a total custom rug? Do we need to fund special parties and meals? We've got to curb some of that stuff back. We could've used a regular rug out here. If it's the right one, and I asked Joni, she's gonna clarify it for me. But we had some rugs that were seventeen hundred and somewhat dollars. Do we need that? Could a black rug worked out there? Some of this stuff, we just need to curb back. Do we need an LED sign? No, do we need to have special parties and stuff? Absolutely not, and we're in a crunch. Dr. Redman, you made it clear a couple of weeks ago, we're spending more than we're bringing in. So I'm asking that we look tighter on some of this stuff. Because those little amounts add up. And we just need to look at that.
Okay. Um. Let's move, Elizabeth?
Oh, yes, okay, um. Uh, just a little reference to the tenure plan. Uh, we haven't really worked on it for about a year and a half, so it's, it's, it might need updating, but. That's not my discussion. It's not on the agenda tonight. But just because it's on the tenure plan, it's just something that administration recommended to the board to review. So I heard what you, I heard what you said, Jeff. Okay, I did, but that wasn't, that wasn't what I was discussing. What I was discussing was. Coming to the board at the eleventh hour. That hasn't given Sam enough time to do a price comparison. Now, there may not be a huge price comparison between epoxy and having. Just finished concrete like they have in the library, like they have in the CTC hallways, all the places they've already done. So that's the point, is the eleventh hour, not whether or not it's on the tenure plan, so thank you.
Okay. Um, next up, Central Mountain Middle School. Uh, replaced science classroom furniture, questions?
Yeah, that was one of the ones I was gonna ask. I saw there was only one bid. Did we get more than that? More bids than that?
It's a, a Co-Stars company, so um.
We have Co-Stars companies in Clinton County also. We have a lot of furniture companies here. Did we check it out?
Uh, I'm not sure. I wasn't in, involved in that, um, but I don't know if the furniture companies that are locally do specific science classroom furniture.
I'd just be curious, to know. Because I thought, and then that was one of the things, do we absolutely need to replace that? Because that's a lot of money for a bunch of stools.
I'm happy to take you through the classrooms and show you the can, the pretty awful condition of our, of our science classrooms.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the whole thing, because we don't see anything.
No, I'm not gonna just walk through.
I know that Rob needs the floors done, cause I've seen them. But like, some of this other stuff, we just don't know anything about it, so I'm just asking. I'm real hard on. I don't, I understand Co-Stars, I've worked with it extensively. But I know we have a bunch of Co-Star companies here in Clinton County also. That, just curious if anybody else can get this type of furniture. That's all.
They're on Co-Stars, then they can bid.
Right.
See it if they're on Co-Stars, so they have every opportunity to bid when we put it out there on, on Co-Stars.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's very, it's fair. It's ethically fair, um, that, that's why we put it on Co-Stars. There's a lot of the local companies are on there.
All right.
But I mean, I, I, that's the whole reason for doing that.
Okay.
You know, fair.
I just, when I saw there was only one bid, I was like, why?
I don't think we got it.
Okay.
Okay, next up, Central Mountain Classroom Edition, questions? Oh, concrete work. Okay, let's do concrete work. Questions? No, okay. Classroom Edition, questions?
Is this the thing to do with the library?
Yes.
Didn't like, two or three years ago, you, the school board spent a whole bunch of money redoing the library? Rebuilding it?
Yep.
Did they?
We do.
I don't know, so right now, uh, I wasn't here then, so I'm not really sure. So what, what's going on? If you go into the Central Mountain Middle School Library in the back corner, there's. An, an arrangement of bookshelves that has created a classroom space. And it's not very effective, because of course it doesn't provide any sound barriers and all that sort of thing, so it gets really loud in there. So this is essentially erecting walls, where we currently have these sort of informal, sort of setup of, of bookshelves and stuff like that.
I just, I was told that, well, it wasn't two or three years ago, they redid that library, so I was wondering.
The middle school library? I do not recall that anything has been done in that library in.
I know that what I was told may have been mistaken.
Okay.
Remember they redid all the floors and everything?
Not in this library. This library is carpeted. I'm sorry, the middle school library.
Middle school, yeah.
Well, that wasn't a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
So a small part of it, so this is a different section.
Okay. Okay. Uh, next up.
Oh, I have something.
Elizabeth?
Okay, um, I didn't know this, but it came up with the facilities committee meeting. Um, they let us know that. Now that space isn't large enough for the two classrooms needed. Okay, it's only gonna cover one classroom that they need, not two.
Which is what I said.
We just learned this at the facilities committee meeting, so. Here's a thought, I'm gonna put it out there. If it doesn't solve the original problem, why would you move forward with it and why not just rethink the whole problem? Now. If you go ahead and do this, we still, we're still one classroom short. So where can we pick up two classrooms? I'm just requesting that administration rethink this.
Elizabeth, was this discussed in the facilities committee?
Not completely, no. It was just mentioned.
Well, here, here's what I'm looking at, okay? Um, what you're bringing up is stuff that's already been talked about in the facilities committee. And you're also bringing up stuff that, um. The way I'm seeing it is something that you want. All right, I think that's something that if you want that, please bring it up in the facilities committee, because what we're looking about. Is continuing on with the uh, doing this right now. So, okay. That's, that's, that's what's going on here. Okay, I appreciate your opinions. However, you're restating stuff that's already been discussed or needs to be discussed in facilities. Okay?
So, oh, so we should talk this for facilities?
No, you can discuss it at the next facilities meeting.
That'll be in August.
Roger.
Yes.
I think um, the reason this was changed, I believe, and Dr. Redman, you correct me if I'm wrong, um, that. When this, it was originally thought that you had enough space there for two classrooms. However, whenever you got. The state regulations and so on for size of a classroom, you realized at that point. That you, it wasn't gonna have enough room. So that's why it had to be scaled back to one classroom. And so I'm sure you've rethought it to the point where, where you're gonna come up with this, this additional space for the classroom.
As I said, we're already using that space as a separate classroom. It's just not really separated, so this is. Making the classroom more formal, right? Rather than just the moved around uh, bookshelves. We don't have two classrooms back there. We have one. We were hoping to be able to make two, because then it gives us more flexibility. We're not gonna be able to get that, so one is better than not doing anything.
So you won't need another room?
Uh, at some point, we'll need another room, but. We'll also use that space for, we're still using, gonna use that space for a classroom, so we should finish it and make it into a classroom.
Okay, and then I have one last question. This, this is for autistic children? Is that correct or? Is it a regular classroom? Is it for, what's the classroom to be used for?
I don't, I don't know, off the top of my head, uh, it's, it's used for uh, um, a variety of classroom, uh, classes, but.
It states here in that it's for ELL and autistic, autistic support. That it's in the agenda item.
So, these are just the middle hall kids. We're not just bringing other kids in here to, from our school district, right? Okay, great. All right, I understand the rationale. I really do. I do. Thank you for the conversation.
Okay, next, uh, Family Consumer Science Room, questions? Okay, Keystone Security and Technologies Annual Service, questions on that? Price Fire Protection Annual Service, questions on that? Kings Three Elevator Service Agreement, questions on that? Eastern Elevator Agreement, questions on that?
Sure.
Elizabeth?
Thank you. I just wanted to share that. Um, what Mr. Hoy is doing is, we did talk about this during the facilities committee meetings that. Instead of us just continually renewing contracts. Agreements that he'll go through with administration and pick a few, okay? And they'll bring those up so they can go out to bid again. And then maybe have them on a rotating basis. So I just wanna let you know that was co, uh, discussed, and he's working on that.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Library Weeding Report, questions?
Didn't we just do that? Like a month or two ago?
It's different schools. So you'll see one that'll be one school, this one is a couple of schools, so it kind of, it depends on which schools we're completing the weeding report for.
Cause I, I, when I looked at it, I saw everyone was weeding, weeding, weeding. It's a reason getting rid of them. But I'm glad you got uh, Rob coming to look at them. Or not Rob, but the library.
Ross's library, mm-hmm. It's what we normally do.
That's a lot of books.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, next up is.
Replaced?
What's that?
I mean, it just seems like that's a lot of books to be just overwater at one time, or are these books being replaced or?
Uh, it's not universally one thing, or the, some of them are being replaced, some of them don't need to be replaced. Books that haven't been checked out in a decade or more, and that, there's specific criteria for our weeding about books that we remove, but it's books that just never get looked at.
Okay, I'm not saying that, okay, a book that's not used, I'm saying, I mean, books are disappearing, should we?
Yeah.
Get more books?
Yeah.
Well, I know at one point, whenever we were going through this weeding, and I was just a regular board member. I actually asked the question about this. I'm like, well, what about, you know, books about guns and all this other stuff? Are they, you know, I was like, hold it, you know, are you getting rid of all these things? And they're like, no. They're not, you know, it's just with them being torn up or, you know. Binding start going. That's one, yeah, abuse of the book. Eventually what they do is they'll pull that book out and get something very similar and bring it in. Or if they can, get the same book, only a newer version of it.
I just asked, I thought we were doing the weeding of the same, same school.
I was just concerned, it might be just depleting.
No, but.
You know, it's ignoring books.
No, it's important for our kids to have books in their hands.
This is great, but books are important.
The tactile feel and everything makes it, yeah. Okay.
Let's face it, the way books are made these days, they don't last like they used to.
That's a fact.
You read them four or five times, they're ready to fall apart.
Elizabeth, you had something?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, all right.
You're so, you're starting to see imaginary hands, cause I do it.
I feel that way, yes. Okay, next up is the uh, Hamel Family Human Rights Initiative with PSU. This is an MOU. Any questions on that? Elizabeth?
Not imaginary, it's real.
I saw it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here that did not go on this website to check them out? So you all saw their website? Penn State's?
Penn State.
Okay, well, I'm describing this program. Or should I, oh, me back up. Is there anyone here? That Googled or went on the Hamel Family Human Rights Initiative, PSECU webpage? Is there anyone else here that did that? Otherwise, I won't waste your time. Okay.
I did not, cause I didn't have time.
Okay, fair enough. First of all, um. Did this go through the curriculum committee? And if you don't feel it had to, that's fine, but I don't know.
This is a professional development. This is, this doesn't.
Oh, it's for K through twelve, okay.
Is K through twelve teachers.
Right, to teach.
It's, yeah, it, it's a, we have a cohort of staff that work with this, uh, with this group over the course of the year. And it's pretty incredible professional development, the work that these teachers are doing.
Okay.
Kind of with each other in the cohort, but also using what they learn together to have a positive impact on their work with kids.
Okay, well. Okay, well, the, what I read on the internet and they're on the web page is, just please bear with me since you didn't read it, otherwise. I might not be able to communicate this properly. And first of all, the topic, I'm not gonna say anything bad about the topic. But it just says here, the HGRE Initiative. A partnership with the Pennsylvania Department of Education and several state and national entities. Provides training and resources to help K-12 educators across the Commonwealth. To teach students about a wide vari- range of difficult topics from the Holocaust. And other, um. Items similar to that, to trauma inflicted by the COVID-19 health crisis. It was launched in response to Pennsylvania's Act Seventy of Twenty Fourteen. Which called on educators across the state to develop programming about the Holocaust. And other human right violations in effort to quote, provide children with an understanding of the importance of the protection of human rights. And the potential consequences of unchecked ignorance, discrimination, and persecution. Those are only two sentences. Thank you. Now, here's my point. It's ten thousand dollars. It does cover some of the things that they need to cover. Um, as far as their acts in continual training, et cetera, et cetera. But here, here's the gist of it. To the best of my knowledge, we already have the Holocaust in our curriculum. Okay, so we already have it.
Right, and this allows the teachers to be able to, uh, teach this in a more professional way.
Okay.
All right, so that, that's what this is for, okay? This has nothing to do with any, any, I, I don't even know where you're going with it.
I took it off the, well.
But my whole thing is, okay, what? I want everybody to understand is, we're approving an MOU. For our teachers to go to this class to become better educated and to be able to, um, present. These different topics, um, in a way that is going to help the students. And. Be able to be, uh, more sensitive in some areas, okay? Um, I don't know what, going into all this, you're saying about, you know, the cost of it or whatever. Okay. This is training that they're already, uh, allotted. It's already in our budget. So.
Well, it's, it's their title funds.
Well, yeah, title funds, but, I mean.
I'm sorry, could you, I, I don't understand what you're saying.
Title II funds is a grant that we received that is specifically earmarked for professional development of our staff. So we're using those grant funds to support this program.
Okay.
Support training with teachers.
Thank you.
Okay, may I finish, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, here, here, bear with me, please. Even if you disagree, please bear with me. All right, so this was done by an endowment by two people for five million dollars. Then Penn State took the program, the endowment, and they've created these programs for training. Fair enough. Why in the world would a public school have to pay ten thousand dollars for a program? That Penn State was left with a five million dollar endowment. So here's my point. We have to pay ten thousand dollars and.
That is done through a grant.
Uh, yes, I really.
For through a grant. So we're not really, we're not paying for it. It's being taken care of through a grant.
My point is, I want the teachers trained. If this is what they want.
It is.
We, we get so much positive reinforcement from those teachers after they go through the, this program. Year after year, teachers are saying this is.
This exact program.
This is some of the best professional development that we've done.
Well, please, it would be so helpful to know what the teachers want. If this is what the teachers want.
Tell you that's.
Well, yes, but I know. But if it was a teacher endorsed, but.
Bill?
May I finish, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So. To continue with this conversation, if this is the type of training the teachers want, if this is one of their priorities, I will support it a thousand percent. Okay?
That's why.
But I will also support. A field trip conversation so those children can actually go to the National Holocaust Museum of DC.
It's a whole different thing.
I know it is, I know it is, but what I'm trying to say is.
All right.
All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Dr. Redmond sort of answered a question I was gonna have, but I think that it would be worthwhile. Especially on a, this happens to be something, I mean, I have a great interest in World War Two history and I read like crazy on it. And things so. And I've seen a lot of things really poorly presented and. It would be, at least I think it would be helpful for all of us, but that's a guess. I know it would be interesting for me to hear directly from them how this helped them in presenting these topics.
So keep in mind, the description that Elizabeth read said that an example of the Holocaust. Or one of the examples was the Holocaust, but it, the overall program is. Helping teachers address really difficult and challenging subjects with kids. Uh, and so I think it might be useful to have some of the teachers present some of the projects that were, it's, it's a project based class.
Yeah.
To, to kind of describe their experience.
That would be great.
Dr. Redmond, if you don't mind, uh, inquiry based learning is what the premise of the program is.
I'm sorry?
Inquiry based learning, the approach.
I don't know what that is.
So that's basically looking at a student centered approach to, uh, learning, question driven learning. Um, ways for students to think through deeper, complex, uh, issues and topics. And then I just wanted to share that the, the teachers who are involved in this inquiry based program through Penn State. At the end of the course, they present an overview of what they've learned. And what their specific project was that they worked on. So that might be something that the board could be invited to. Cause they do present it as a group, as a cohort. Um, and I will speak on behalf of two teachers who went through the program at Rob. Did the inquiry based learning and both of them had shared with me what a life changing experience it was. Because it allows you to think through things from different perspectives. Um, and it's also. It's also about the teacher being a facilitator of conversation and that student driven, hands on approach to their own learning. So that opportunity to hear those, uh, experiences, I think are already in place. I think it would be an opportunity to invite the board to hear those.
Yeah, they do the presentations for that in the spring. Uh, and so I attended that meeting, um, this year when it, uh, because they present right here in the boardroom. Uh, during the school day, so I'm, I'm certainly, uh, happy to. Talk to Megan who kind of oversees this, this program to make sure that you all are invited for next year's presentation.
Anything we can do to help the teachers learn to deal with stuff like this is the way to go.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's not any, it's not always a complex, deep topic. It can be just a way to look at. Why do some plants grow better in this certain type of soil and this certain type of environment? Um, and it's question based, it's, it's curiosity based in that sense of like exploration. Those students kind of take ownership of that inquiry. And then that's where they base their learning from. So it's not always just controversial topics. It could also be surrounding simple topics like ecology. It could be something about soil quality, um, simple things like that.
Well, anytime we can help a teacher teach, that's what it's all about.
That's, that's a whole different, totally different. Thank you. Excellent discussion. But a clarification.
Okay, next up, judicial sale. Questions?
Thanks, thanks for getting us that answer from the lawyers on that. That cleared a lot of.
Okay.
Stuff up.
Okay, next up, got policy read. First read, looking at three seventeen. Questions? These have all already been vetted, so.
Yeah.
We should be good here.
All of these here, we've gone through pretty seriously.
Okay, policy three seventeen point one. Policy three twenty. Policy three thirty nine. Policy six twenty five. Policy seven eighteen. Personnel. Anybody have any questions on that?
I do.
Okay.
We've talked about. Controlling costs and stuff repeatedly. We've beat it to death. And we're hiring a lot of people here. I've asked for. Uh, us to put a hiring freeze on. Do we get everything cleared up? And I see us just hiring more and more and more people for a lot of money.
Yeah, these are replacements. We're, we're not, we're not adding on additional staff.
Okay. Because, uh, in the finance meeting, Bill had brought it up earlier. You wanted to talk about hiring a. Company to evaluate staffing levels, but here we're just piling it on with a lot of money.
I'm not sure what you mean by pile it again. On, again, the, so we have to replace necessary positions in order to keep the school district running. We have to have teachers in the classrooms. We have to have custodians in the hallways.
Understand.
And so we're not adding on extra staff. These are place, these are positions that we have to refill in order to keep our schools running.
Okay.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Okay, thank you. Um. On page one, I believe. Oh, it's page two. Thank you. Under professional. Now, please disregard the name of the person. Okay, this isn't about the person. This is. Just imagine the word Jane Doe, okay? Under professional. Employment of Jane Doe as acoustic support teacher at Woodward Elementary School.
Autistic support.
Autistic.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, placed at blah, 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 the salary of seventy two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Plus twenty thousand dollars in benefits. So. This, uh, Jane Doe. Did it go through Personnel Committee first?
So it follows our normal hiring procedure.
Okay, so it was published, publicized and.
Of course it was. People write normal, just, it was all the normal procedures that we follow per hiring guide.
Okay, so it was put out for public release. Okay. Um, I will be honest with you. I know nothing about this job description. I know nothing about this person's skill set, how many years they've had applied experience.
Elizabeth, that, that's what the, uh, that's the superintendent and his staff. That's what they get paid to do. It's not our responsibility. We're just supposed to.
Would you let me finish?
Listen to what he's saying. I mean, he's the professional.
Okay. If, if this Jane Doe is the same person that works at another local school district. On the web, it says it's forty eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. And this is a jump. So my whole point is, I do not feel comfortable. Hiring someone at this price range unless I know. That they come with at least five years of applied experience, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So please, it's the name Jane Doe has nothing to do about the individual.
So the, the, how they're placed on the salary scale is based on our contractual agreements, uh, with our, uh, uh, teachers union. So the person is placed based on their experience and, and education. Uh, we, we can't just arbitrarily decide on a number. We have a salary scale that we have agreed to.
I understand that, but I just want to let you know. I can't, I can't appreciate, sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay. Okay, it says filled due to vacancy. How long has the position been vacant? Have we been getting along fine without it and?
No, this is due to another move. So this is some, something that starts next year because the teacher is currently filling that position, moving somewhere else.
So there, so there is no vacancy now. There's gonna be a vacancy. All right. And it's something that's absolutely necessary.
Kids take this class. A lot of kids that we have, yes, they, this class, this is in particular, this class in particular is full.
Yeah, okay, that's, then it's, it's your ballgame. You know, I, I don't want to.
Any other questions?
Micro manageable.
Okay. Next is athletics personnel. Questions? All right, on to my favorite spot.
Motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I would just request that you consider this for a future agenda. Um, um, an update from our CTC. Person on what they've accomplished and what they're working on. Um, it's always enjoyable. That would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
That's it.
Got a motion for adjournment? I don't, I'm not, okay, I got a second. Adjourn.